Hey guys, I'm not hearing you. I was hearing you, but.
Okay.
There we go.
Yeah, recording? Okay, good morning, everyone. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the town in Canaan for Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. It's 8:31 AM. We have a quorum, athletes here next in vacation somewhere and on by Zoom. We have other people on by Zoom. So first, I will be amend the agenda and I an item for the sidewalks on Richmond Hill Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor, I.
I.
Okay. And. We'll do that. The end of Tigers.
It's not out.
I was not.
Freeze.
Freeze. Toward the end of the meeting, okay? So first item on the agenda, number one is minutes from the last meeting on March 21. Any comments or corrections?
None.
I move. I move we approve the minutes.
Okay.
All favor, I. Public comment, members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics get, oh, I, I, I'm sorry, I wanted to mention. And take note of the amazing victory last night of the Yukon Huskies. Congratulations. Both an amazing team and also to Coach Dan Hurley. Perhaps there is hope for the Hoyas, the Cavaliers and B C Eagles, but anyway. Amazing accomplishment, so.
Yeah, well done.
Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics, schedule for review and or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be. Sent to B O S distribution at the Cana C T dot gov and we'll read them before the end of the meeting. Anyone wish to?
Carter Weiss. I'm just requesting, my name is Carter Weiss. I'm just requesting that the minutes be corrected from the last meeting. In there, it says. I was asking for a consultant to study a consultant to be revisited. That's not what I said. I was asking why the town is using a decade old RFP. What specific current due diligence has been done on Homeland Towers? And suggested that the Tower of RFP be pulled and a new one be started. Thank you.
I think we got that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carter.
Any further comment? From members of the public? Seeing none. Chief. Albi Bassett, good morning.
Good morning, Selectmen. Fire Department is requesting approval to increase our blanket purchase order with M E S shipments from our current nine thousand eight hundred to fifteen thousand. For various repairs, this includes our S C B A repressor compressor. We had a. A repair, unscheduled repair that had to happen and some of our cold water suits. To get those covered for. Payment.
Any questions?
None.
Not here.
I don't quite understand what this is about, but we'll prove it.
Well, I just assume we've already budgeted ninety eight hundred.
Correct.
And it's going to be a little over that, so you've increased it.
Exactly, so.
Okay. And it has to happen before the end of June thirtieth.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
With that clarification, I move we approve this. Purchase order for the M E S shipments. Blank and purchase order for various repairs to essential equipment to fifteen thousand dollars. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, and our second request is approval for us to pay gallons night apparatus repair. On the sum of sixteen thousand two hundred thirty seven eighty five dollars, eighty five cents for repair work on our two thousand one fire engine, engine four. It went in for annual service and needed some large amounts of pump work. And so we bring brought everything up to standard, everything up to safety standards, and that was our total. So. Request for the sixteen two hundred thirty seven eighty five.
Questions?
Just one question, two thousand one, what's the use remaining useful life of this engine?
This. This one's a potential for repair. I mean, with these repairs that we just had. This truck will be with us probably at least ten more years.
Okay.
Yeah, so the lot of TLC on this. And this is the one, this one was running for a while while the rescue was being built, so that's why it didn't get the care it should have over the last two years. So we finally caught up on some of the repairs. But this should be around another ten years.
Great.
Another ten years is that it's great to hear.
Yeah.
I move we approve the request from the fire department to enter to a contract with Go Lanz Night Company in the amount of sixteen thousand two thirty seven eighty five for repair work on engine number four. As described by Chief Bassett, second?
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor?
I. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Library loan, Ian? And me. And Bob. So we are finally getting to the point where the library needs some funds and. This has been deferred, deferred, deferred since last October and. Library's done a fabulous job raising money and the expectation is that perhaps they will only borrow like three million dollars. We thought it was going to be five or seven million dollars, so this is a great, great job that library has done. The new building is absolutely amazing. Congratulations again, Bob, and your and Lisa and the entire team. So the the only change from this documentation which you had seen previously is the promissory note. And with the inverted yield curve last year, we realized that. We wanted to be fair to the library and not use these temporarily temporarily short term rates would have caused them to be paying a lot more than they anticipated and. And also. You know, we always had the possibility that we'd have to charge a taxable rate because we'd have issued taxable bonds for this, unlike the grant that we financed with tax root. Money. So anyway, Ian can describe briefly the the terms of the loan, but if you have any questions on the loan documents, they changed itself. Nothing changed except the note. And again, that was mainly to allow us to loan general fund dollars. For what is anticipated to probably be not more than two or three years as these pledge payments are. All received in over the next two or three years. So at least this here is also good morning, Lisa.
So the.
Ian speaking to the mic.
So the main one was the construction line of credit promissory remote was the first one we started that determined their rates and items that they would do. So. It was up to five million dollars in general fund cash that they could pull up to five million dollars under the main loan. It's ten million, but from a cash perspective, we were only going to do five under. The general fund, and then if needed, it would be five million under a bond, but we're not going down that path. So. The muni rate we're using is the tax exempt plus point, point two five percent on top. The rate will be at the time of the advance. Currently, rates are at about two point two nine for exempt. And about four, four point four for tax exam, just to give or taxable, just to give you some. Guideline on that one. On each advance is when we would then calculate what that rate is on that particular day. And. The calculation would be on the three hundred and sixty day, and then it would be through the payment prepaid, the payment period. So the payment period starts February of first of twenty twenty four. And it goes ten years, so it's through June basically of twenty twenty, I can't do the math right now, twenty thirty four and. But. Based on we were getting cash flows and you, there's a lot of documents in front of you on it. We do get cash flows to show when the pledges are coming in. We have an auditor, they have an auditor that an audit firm that will quarterly give us an update. We did request a in the documents, a pledge. An independent order to look at their pledge and their pledge agreements. That was done through December of twenty twenty two and forwarded to us on what they had. Their original pledge was eighteen point four. They received fifteen point nine. With still another two point five outstanding of where it stood at the end of December. They have in the cash flow. They have currently because some questions had come up in relation to. The dollar amount left to be paid out as to why this loan is needed and why we need to loan these dollar amounts. Because now it's the demolition of the old building. I believe it's the fifty two, the year fifty two and seventy nine, I think it is Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong. And all the costs related to that. So you have abatement, you have landscaping. The soft costs in regards to F F and E. A lot of the, a lot of the vendors were paid as a deposit. Now all those bills are coming due because even though the building is pretty much done, all those buildings are all those. All those payments are coming forward and now the demolition of the old part, not including the legacy. Make sure that was very clear in the documents. It's not including the legacy. So the agreement, the main agreement is this loan agreement that we did for a cash. To cover that cash shortfall for the library up to five million dollars.
You didn't mention one important thing. The rate is the ten year muni rate.
Sorry, the ten year, it's the ten year rate and right now that ten year rate is about two point two nine.
So plus twenty five, plus twenty five bits.
Correct, plus the twenty five base points.
Bob, do you want to say anything? You know, again, I, the expectation is you're going to borrow two million dollars this week and.
Right, right here, Bob, this mic works. Bob, sorry, this is the.
This mic, yeah.
Might have to move.
Here, you can just go. There you go.
Good morning. Yeah, as far as the cash flows are concerned. What we've done is our best modeling with respect to the future pledges, when they're going to come in relative to our expenses and. At the latest cashless model, we think that the. The maximum drawdown at any one point in time with respect to borrowing would be roughly three and a half million dollars. I think that's. That's the neighborhood. I mean, it could go higher, obviously, based on the timing of of future pledges when they come in. But we don't anticipate going over five million and certainly, you know, our goal at the library is to. Borrow the least amount of money from the town we possibly can, so. It's the, we're encouraged by. The way the the pledges have been coming in, there's a lot of momentum on the capital campaign. And we'll hopefully announce a fairly large new pledge in the next several weeks.
Questions for Bob or Ian?
Hey, Bob, can you talk just briefly about the legacy building and? And where things are without the so-called nineteen thirteen building?
Sure, and Lisa obviously is here and she can join me. She might better understand the specifics, but. At this point in time, we've been working with our architects. And with various construction planners and obviously Turner. To build all the plans to move the nineteen thirteen building to the location that was approved by P N Z, which is up the hill, sort of backing up against the Gulf Station. That will not happen until such time as we've finished. The demolition of the surrounding. Parts of the library, which includes an effort underway right now for abatement of asbestos. And other work associated with preparing that nineteen thirteen building to be moved. We would anticipate that that would occur roughly in the June timeframe. But that's not. Can't be held to. Specifics because it's going to be all dependent on whether it's going to be dependent on what what else they find as part of the abatement process and how long it takes Turner and the team to to finish their work.
Any further questions?
Not on that, but I have a couple of other questions if I may.
Sure.
So, and maybe this is for you, Anne, on the construction line of credit promissory note. So you had mentioned the five million. Is that why that still says five million? Or is it supposed to be ten million?
It's ten million is the promissory note that the the overreaching is ten million, but it's broken down into two. Sources of funding, cash and bonding. We don't believe we're going to go down the bonding route. If if we did, we would then come before. And rip off from the bonding side of it, but we're just doing the cash note right now and we split it into two tranches of the five and five because the overreaching one is ten million in total.
Yeah, let me explain that a little further. You know, we'd be concerned with lending too much out of the general fund.
Yeah.
So that because this won't be a. Marketable security or. So that, so therefore, if we just, if they do end up going over five million dollars, which we don't anticipate, we probably would bond that instead. But we saw reserving the right to. To use the the other note for the bond for the bonding of it.
But wouldn't you come back to us then if I mean, if this is. The credit promissory note is five million, but. Other documents is ten. Yes, right, right. So but the promissory note, you want to leave at five, you'd have to come back if you needed an additional five.
Correct.
For the bonding.
There, there are two separate promissory notes.
Right.
Completely. I only have one.
Really have one. One's going to be signed today. The other one, we won't sign unless it's absolutely necessary. We use it, but they're effectively the same. Legal language with the exception of the calculation of of interest and principal and the way you have to bond something versus borrowing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not clear. We would have to issue taxable bonds if we use that, but but depending on how large our offer.
It's a choice, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll have to decide. Okay, sorry, I just have a couple of others. So on the, the. The total. I think it was eighteen and a half million, something like that was in terms of the total pledges. Fifteen or sixteen have come in. And so. Of what has already come in, has that already already been used for the project costs?
Completely spent.
It's completely spent. Okay, great. And so the what we're waiting for in terms of pledges that have not yet to be received is about, I think, two, two and a half million, something like that. Okay.
It's two point three million.
Two point three, thank you. And that two point three is is really the proposed collateral for what the loan.
Part of the collateral.
Part of the collateral. What's the other part that's going to match up to three and a half? So it's just, I meant cash flow.
Yeah.
Yeah. How do we, so if if we're pledges are less than what potentially the draw will be, how how do you reconcile that?
Here's how it will work. You know, we have several categories. We have two point three million of future pledges, but we also have another three point, almost four million of pending gifts. Which will be eventually translated into pledges.
Right.
That total. Of all proceeds, once we sign this note. Will all go into a pledged account.
Right.
And from that pledged account, we'll pay our expenses with town approval and we'll also. Use that money.
Just the construction expenses.
Expenses, correct.
Right, right, just the construction, right.
And then we have roughly another three and a half million or more of. Future fundraising yet to go. So in combination of the borrowed funds from the town, along with our pledges coming in. You know, we anticipate that, you know, we won't draw down as far as towns proceeds any more than roughly three and a half million. That's. But I think five million is a safe number. Given.
Okay, so I, so the the loan. Pledges and future gifts in total should cover the total expense of everything that the library is expected to incur.
Correct.
Okay. What is the cash flow that covers? The principal and interest of the loan itself beginning in February of of next year?
Well, those will be future pledges coming in after we don't have any more expenses. Okay, so the pledges are scheduled, you know. Over a three to five year period in some cases. So if you look all the way out to two thousand twenty seven. We have substantial amounts of money coming in at regular intervals throughout that whole period. That money will be used to pay. All interest and hopefully pay down the principal. And if we get new pledges beyond what we anticipate, which we're working on right now, those will be used to effectively pay down. The debt with town.
Okay, and and those have to be capital pledges. They wouldn't be your regular operating.
Everything is.
Right.
Capital campaign pledges, that's distinct from anything else, and it's also distinct from any monies that we might raise for the legacy building.
Okay, is that so? So help me understand that. Is that a separate, how much money have you set aside for that? And do you need more in terms of pledges in order to get the whole project?
That's very much a dynamic situation, so we don't really have a lot of information on that right now.
We don't have any information to respect to future pledges on the capital campaign, like the legacy building, because. At this point, there really aren't any.
Right, but how do we know how much the whole project?
Expecting some information in the next two weeks.
For information about.
To answer that question.
Okay, so the cost of. The cost of moving, doing whatever. Okay, okay. Does you want to say something?
Just to give you some clarity on on numbers, what Bob was talking about in twenty three, between the pledges fundraising and the different areas for the library side. It's five point five million. Expected in twenty four, it's about two point five million and in twenty five, one point four. So that's encompassing those expenditures and paying back our loans outside of any additional that they're expecting.
Well, paying back our loan, but also paying the expenses of the total project. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Money are what's estimated and, you know, some are pledged to come in in those time periods on top of what they've had as December of twenty two.
Right.
So then then the expenditures throughout that will cover with as they come in and then following February of next year. The access of those funds then turn over to the town.
That's presuming that all the expenses are done.
Like. The way it's laid out now. We cannot borrow from the town after the end of this year.
Correct.
All of our expenses related to phase one or the major building project phase two are expected to be completed by the end of this year.
Right.
So that's why we don't start paying interest and principal to February first of twenty four.
Right.
So. In the interim, you know, all the proceeds that are going into the account, in this case, the pledge account. All money is coming in new as well as your loan proceeds. Are going to be used to pay these expenses between now and year end. And so in in theory, those expenses will go down to zero as of year end.
And sorry, sorry. Why is, are we not having the library pay for the loan if it's being drawn? This week or ten days from now, whatever.
Well, because the the proceeds that we get are used to pay expenses first. We have to pay our expenses.
Yeah.
And then combined with the loan proceeds. We're going to pay both, you know, everything. So in in theory, if we were paying down currently. Not the the idea, we, all we would be doing is coming back to town and asking for more money and more money to replace what we're. Already spent. So right now, our bank account is effectively zero. Right, you're going to, we're going to ask for a loan of two million dollars effective today. And then.
I I get all that. So accrued interest, though.
Yeah, accrued interest will occur, absolutely.
Okay.
Interest is always pay. They're always current interest.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, yeah, so so accrued interest starts. Okay, thanks.
Cruise till the point where you start sweeping.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Account February first.
I understand. Okay, great. And so I know you're going to be using those that that account for active expenditures and so forth. There's not going to be any investment, I presume, in CDs, and I'm looking at Ian on this one in terms of that we have no. Responsibility in putting it in in FDIC insured CDs.
But the the. The library will.
Yeah, what did, where did you end up on that? That question as to where to deposit the funds, just.
So the the one minor, and it's extremely minor change that we may ask at the time of signing, is just to add, we have in addition. To the operating account, if you will, which the checking account at Bankwell, we have a money market account that's linked to it that earns interest. And the proceeds, if we get large proceeds coming in from either a donor or from a new drawdown from the town, we go initially into the money market and earn some interest. But transactionally, most of this money is going to go in and out within a very short period of time. So with respect to credit risk or anything of that sort, we're not overly concerned.
What's the total exposure you have to that one bank in terms of credit risk that's not FDIC insured?
Well, you know, if you're using the two hundred and fifty thousand number, I mean. Theoretically, for short periods of time have up to, you know, three quarters of a million dollars in excess, but very short periods of time. So for example, if we're drawing down two million on the loan. You know, tomorrow, we have over one point six million of expenditures we're going to be paying out the next day. So there's a little overage there and we're anticipating a fairly large new pledge to come in. But we know that every month we're going to be paying Turner roughly three quarters of a million dollars. Until we pay the rest of the G M P, which should be. Completed by October.
Hey, hey, Bob, is Turner doing the demoing? And the abatement?
Yes, they're overseeing the whole project. Yes, that's.
And and the move of the legacy building?
Correct. I mean, there's subs involved, but Turner is in in charge of the whole project.
Do you have something? You want to say something?
I'll say a final comment.
Okay. And then I just give it, thank you for all that. Appreciate that.
This is actually under the investment policy. It's not under the, it's, it's a purchase of a note, so. That Andrew's, you know, got to. Operate within the investment policy, so.
Understood. Yeah, no, I'm just wondering how how the library might be doing with cash. You explained that, so thank you for that. So I'm just thinking in the whole picture, and actually, probably one of the regrets I had was I think about this is whether or not, you know, at some point, whether it's this agreement, I don't think so, but another agreement that you might be thinking about. If you don't, you don't have the answers to, you know, what's the cost, etc. That's two weeks away, I guess. Lisa, is that what you said in terms of the legacy building, the? The final project, if you will, everything done, right, in terms of what your vision is, just sort of seems like that's still a missing piece. For us in terms of understanding what the total cost of the project is and the responsibilities of of the town, etc., whether it's the loan, I know the the you've already fully drawn on the ten million, I presume, on the grant. Right. So just if you think of it in in sort of the total project cost. And given if you were to hypothetically think about the fact that you potentially someday might have. Space or land available to the library and to the town that is, you know, basically open from Main Street to South Avenue. Is the proposed project of moving the legacy library still something that you want to go forward? In that maybe you have opportunities to do other things. What's the board thinking about in terms of that?
I I think that's such early days, that other thing that you've just alluded to.
Right.
But what we are talking to Turner about is what would it look like if? If such changes were to happen, what would be the opportunities? Given it's completely theoretical, this.
Theoretical.
Thing, we, I don't think. Yeah, as fiduciaries of the library and in good conscience, we can make any definitive plans based on that theoretical. What we can do is be prepared. For what if that happened? So we are having those conversations.
And we have discussed that with the architects. So if you think about, you know. Ten, twenty years down the road, you know, what everything might look like. You know, they have, they have a long term vision as well, and you know, they have. Thought about, you know, what the best location is for the nineteen thirteen building overall. And, you know, they've incorporated that into their plans and they're quite happy with. Right now where it stands. You know, next to the bell station and and how things could potentially change down the road if necessary.
And if that were to happen, we'd be prepared to work with whomever to to revisit all of that. But in the meantime, we have a project to finish, so we need to move forward as we are.
So one of the things in terms of a master plan, if you will, for the whole space, I mean, is is there?
Money now, we need to finish paying for this project and get this finished, so we don't have a, you know, a master planning.
The new library.
Correct, and the green and everything else is still to go that we've got a contract for.
Yeah, I mean, phase two, which is what we're in right now, needs to be completed before anything else could be envisioned, if you will. And so that's underway and will be completed. By the end of this year and then.
This is phase two, this is the.
Phase two means the construction of the green for which we signed a G M P. Two years ago or more, right? So we we have, we have a legal legally binding contract for a project that then has an extra project, which is the move of the legacy and the retention of legacy. That's a whole separate project that will have to be. Dealt with separately.
The move, the move of the building is in there.
And the preservation of it, right? There's a, there's a lot to that second.
Your funds for that are coming out of other another pocket.
Correct, nothing to do with this project, but but I think it's important, what what seems to be missing maybe in the understanding is the G M P. Was not just for the building. The G M P was for the entire project as presented, so we have to finish that.
But finishing that means either moving the nineteen thirteen, leaving it, moving it totally someplace else.
Needs to be moved, right? Because that was, and we've got a, we've got a ruling about the the one and only place that can be, right? the the one and only place that can be, right? So that's, that's all. So that's, that's a separate project that needs to go forward in parallel. But we we still have this first contract that we have to go through.
Well, I mean, and and this is probably important. I mean, it encompasses the green, but it's also the landscaping, the excavating. It is the retaining walls, the sidewalks, the lighting, the abatement, the masonry, uh the demolition, utilities, everything that's going to be construction of the terrace, everything that builds out all of the whole property, including the moving of the nineteen thirteen building to basically a slab position uh up on the hill. And when that's completed, then the future of that building will is, which is yet to be determined will be figured out by donors, by town, by others who contribute and determine what its purpose is going to be, right?
So when you include all those things, absolutely, how to not have a sort of picture as to what that total cost is going to be. I just, I I'm not still struggling with that.
We have a picture of the cost to finish phase two.
Phase two, which includes moving.
No, no, no. The the moving of the building is its own project. They are happening in parallel, but in terms of contractually and and financially, these are two separate, there's phase two of project one. And then there's phase one of project two, which is moving the building. The two have, they are interlinked, but they are two separate things. The document we signed with town, the MOU was very clear that there could be no co-mingling of funds on that, right? So we've kept everything very, very separate.
But phase two is the whole, you're done, right? Everything about the whole project is done. Is that right? Phase two, which Bob just read off the list.
Yeah.
Yes.
You just read off a project one. Okay, what's project two?
Project two is everything related to the legacy building.
Okay, so you're, okay, so you're.
Abate, abating it.
Okay, so we don't have that.
Moving it. So we have, we have price indications. We've been going through this process. As you know, there's first a concept design which gets estimated. Then there's design development. We've been going through design development since last year that you get another set of estimates. The more refined the project gets, the more the, you know, you get another set of estimates. So of course, we have all the estimates and the drawings um from from in concept design. We're now waiting for the last set of of all of that. Um, that's what I referred to and I said, we're waiting for that.
I see. But that's all you want to get done by June. I just.
Oh, no, no, that second piece is not going to be done by June.
Yeah, it will take to, what's getting done by June is anticipated is is the moving of the nineteen thirteen building to a location.
To keep it safe and sound, so it can be preserved, which is what was.
Where it sits right now is going to be, there's going to be a totally different landscaping and excavation. So you know, the the whole topography of the land will change dramatically in the next four months.
The whole topography, okay.
Well.
I can't imagine.
Well.
Well, of course, because it's, it's got a huge dip in it and a big hump in the middle of the lawn, so.
So.
I mean, this is something we've talked about like a hundred times, right? So.
The building is going to be put on rails and it's going to be moved and and uh.
So that it's safe.
Then we'll decide what's going to happen to it, so.
Right.
It's going to be safe and secure so that the rest of project one can be finished. And then when that's done, project two, which is restoring the legacy building, will come on stream. And if other developments that may be afoot should coincide with that, well, yippee, we can all work together on seeing how that works.
I mean, we we need to be clear that uh, you know, the the final fit out and purpose and everything for the for the legacy building has yet to be determined. Okay, so what we're doing is we're getting it secure and and putting it in a location that it it can rest for the time being if you, while the rest of the project goes on and and.
And and that that location is the approved location that has been given by.
I thought you were talking about something totally different. Okay, 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 right, okay.
But given there's now something else on train, right, elsewhere. You, that was where you started was with that.
Yeah.
So we're addressing the fact.
Master planning downtown, et cetera, and um if if any of that were to ever come true, would it have made sense to keep the?
That's what we've. We checked with everybody and that does not make sense. But the the most sensible, logical decision from everyone involved has, you know, not us, the architects, the landscape architects, the construction company, everyone else, is that we must complete the project as drawn, moving that building to its new foundation.
Mm hmm.
That has to happen first, regardless of whatever may happen in future. And the specific question was asked, if there were to be a development, would we do anything different? The answer is resoundingly no, we have to finish this because otherwise we aren't, we will have uh well, there's a variety of reasons. One is contractual, we have a contract, but two, the other is um that we would not be able to deliver a finished product to the community for goodness knows how long and to any such other developments maybe should transpire.
So the. Will there be a, will there be a um insurance component with with respect to the move of the legacy building, I E., you know, you put it on the rails to move it.
Yes, yes. It is. In fact, the people that are moving it are Wolf Construction. They've done this thousand times over there, the 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 world's expert on it. And they're, they're confident that this is not something that's overly complex.
And we pay for a lot of insurance.
That's good to hear.
I think, are we ready to approve the document?
So the one last thing is that I think before a a loan on this uh particular agreement happens, you get a cash flow statement ten days before, that's already taken place.
We got it, uh, yeah, we got the cash flow yesterday.
No.
Yesterday.
We've had several cash flows anticipating we're going to do this, so.
And we'll be updating the cash flows all along.
Right.
So every time.
I agree with it. I get it. But you're good with whatever that it matches with the terms of the agreement.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, I'd love to hear more uh about the whole project uh at some point and uh you think you're a couple of weeks away, so maybe we can uh come back and revisit that when when you do.
Is is this because you're offering us some money?
I think that we need to talk, talk about master planning and possibly, and that's why I said, you know, this is you might come back with another one of these or what have you. So I'd like to understand before I commit to anything and I just don't see the full picture.
Okay. We'd love to discuss it with you in the future.
Okay.
I'd just like to reiterate, congratulations. The the new building is fabulous. That was phase one. And uh the camp, the fundraising has been fabulous. Uh the the idea that we're only going to perhaps be at most three and a half million dollars alone is fabulous, so. Um, thank you for all you've done and it's been an amazing uh few years to get to the this point, so. Anything for the Nick?
No, I I applaud the library. What what a, what a absolutely, as you said a couple of times, Kevin, fabulous. It's just extraordinary. It it really is um a wonderful thing for the town to came, then worth every penny.
I'll just, I'll just add, I've been to the library since you've opened officially a half a dozen times for all different reasons and uh the functionality of the uh private workspace, I think, is just incredible in terms of having a resource to the town and I've taken advantage of it three different times for different boards and so forth. So it's uh, you know, kudos for that, for that strategic thinking in terms of what the needs are. And if, do I understand this right? When we lost access to the internet, you had how many people turn up for? A thousand people. Yeah, that's just incredible. And that's always been kind of a resource where the library's always been the go to place whenever we've uh.
That's, that was power as well as internet. I mean, in this case, it was only internet, right? Everybody had power, but yes, for both.
What's the special sauce that you have that uh you didn't get cut?
The library has a backup line from the state that is also used by the schools. And I didn't know you could switch over, so we.
It's not switching over, both run all the time.
All the time. Well, that's amazing.
So we have a, we have the.
Redundancy.
We have, we're, we're, we pay town to be part of the wide area network.
Yeah.
That runs all the systems, right? And it runs our back offices. We have then a different pipe which we get from C N, Connecticut Education Network, that is for our public wifi. This is also good security, right? That we don't have public.
Yeah, so you're not using our pipe for for the wifi at all. You're using the state.
Public? No.
Okay.
No, never. So so they're.
That's good.
They're always both running. It wasn't a cut over. It was just.
I mean, the state could go down conceivably.
It 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 does.
Okay, so.
In more ways than one.
But then you have backup with the town as redundancy if the state goes down or?
No, we keep those two networks completely separate. That's a, that's also a security issue.
Okay.
Well, I asked Chris, you know, we don't have access to the state in this, in the town, but it would be, wouldn't be so easy to switch over. Anyway, that that's another subject. I want to get this document approved, so. Any further questions? Um, uh I move, we approve the uh final library lo- loan constructing documents on our tablets as we discussed. Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to an appointment for a constable position. I think we have two vacancies for constables, but uh Matthew Campbell is a young Republican who uh stepped forward and wants to be a constable, so he's on your tablets and I think he's a good candidate, so.
I think he's a good candidate too. I spoke to him yesterday. Is he here in the room? He thought he might pop by. No, he's not. Um, so I'm in favor.
I move, we approve this appointment of Matthew Campbell to the position of constable for a two year term ending November twenty twenty three.
Okay, second year.
All favor? I?
I.
Okay, that um with Tiger, you're staying, so um next item is um what I term the cellular service improvement discussion. And I first of all, I'd like to read um brief statement. In view of the opposition to the two Homeland Towers proposed locations on the town-owned forty seven point four acres between Ponys Ridge and Lowell and Drive, I propose we create an ad hoc selectmen's committee to review and study possible solutions to improving cellular service on the west side of town. Both Horizon and ATNT have indicated to Homeland Towers their desire to improve their service in the western part of town. Uh, the March twenty four outage of optimum internet service reminded many residents in various areas all over town that they don't have reliable cell service at their homes and yards unless they have installed cell boosters in their houses and that these devices don't work in the event of ISP outages in storms, power outages, and rare events such as vandalism has occurred. Our police, fire, EMS, and DBW first responders depend on reliable cell service in addition to their public safety radios in emergencies to protect our residents, especially children in our schools. Uh, I propose we create a committee consisting of seven members to function for six months to study issues of cell tower health, safety, possible new antenna tower locations, potential new technologies such as satellite, and aesthetics of possible tower locations. So, as you know, the town council subcommittee is going to meet tomorrow night on a proposed ordinance about the utilities commission, and we'll have that conversation tomorrow night with them.
Which conversation are you going to have with them about what you just said?
No, no, I I I I don't favor, you know, utilities commission. Um, in my view, doesn't have areas that need to be addressed because our experience is with the uh the water company and the electric company and the gas company who we met with yesterday. Um, our staff with Tiger, myself, and others work with the utilities all the time. Um, I think the one area that needs attention and attention soon because we can't afford to have Horizon go away again. Horizon has come forward, wants to, wants to provide service, improve their service on the west side of town, as does ATNT. I think people need to understand what reliable cell service means. Um, I drive over in parts of western, uh the west part of town, I get no signal in some locations and I get a bare signal from Stanford in other locations and um for the safety of our our residents, we really need to tackle this issue and come up with a solution. I'm open to solutions. Interestingly enough, the FCC three weeks ago started a rulemaking proceeding to allow satellite to device um nine one one service. Which Apple has already done with their phones. Um, the uh people have to understand, though, that satellite will probably never be the answer for capacity because you can't have internet service and uh and voice communication with the density that would is required for highly populated areas. Uh, Elon Musk may, you know, has ten thousand satellites ultimately serving very rural areas of the earth, but uh the United States is going to depend on on telecommunications from the cell telcos uh for years to come. So I'm open to new technology. Um, I've learned a few things in the past few months that are new and different. Um, and I think others need to understand those. So that I, again, I I uh I think I've had several discussions with people that might populate such a a ad committee. Um, I'll talk to the town council tomorrow night about the difference between this uh utilities commission and a focused commission on telecommunications, so.
But well, I I I guess my question is, you know, I I I think we were talking about reconstituting the utilities commi- commission specifically with the goal of having them focus initially on cellphone service and coverage. Um, and indeed, uh, I don't know about Kathleen, but I've received a number of people who have expressed interest in being part of that reconstitute the utilities commission. I mean, I I I think we all agree and I, you know, I appreciate your thoughts, Kevin, that, you know, there's new technology coming online and such, and we need to focus on that, but I I don't see why a a utilities commission, which the town council has now spent a lot of time discussing and and focusing on, well, you know, why that wouldn't be the the body that uh would move this ball forward. I just, you know, I'm not I I guess you're 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 taking the view that that's wouldn't be within the purview of utilities commission, that 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 subject of.
No, I I just, I just don't see the value of utilities commission beyond that one subject. I just think that it needs to be addressed now. And not, you know, not waiting a few more months to get utilities commission populated.
Well, I don't think it's going to take, I don't, I think we could populate the utilities commission within the next ten days.
Yeah.
I I don't know who those folks are.
Well, I, that's just because they're not your folks. We, Kathleen and I actually have been reaching out to other folks who would bring forward for your and our approval.
Yeah, I I think just to so so we're so what? Okay, so let me, let me just ta- speak if I may. Uh, thank you, Kevin, for your thoughts on that. Um, I don't think that's a very good idea. Uh, I do think that the utilities commission, as Nick has said, is actually well underway, uh both in terms of the development by the uh the town council bylaws and ordinance committee, uh which will be reviewed tomorrow, but also in in, we all have had an opportunity to uh comment on uh their draft. But at the same time, it's not even our own outreach. We've gotten uh a number of people who've reached out to us in response, our public response to people saying, listen, we're going to be reestablishing the utilities commission and um we've gotten, I, it's not been outreach on my part, it's been people actually reaching out to us and so um and and I, we've gone through uh just the early stages of the interview process. We're going to be forming a list, as Nick said. We could probably put this together in ten days. We want to be thoughtful about it. Uh, we've want to actually give you and Nick and myself uh an opportunity to uh interview each candidate and to consider how that population of the utilities commission will will be formed with expertise and and uh knowledgeable backgrounds and information about all aspects of public utilities, including uh cell service, including issues such as electricity and water, uh et cetera. So there is a broad uh uh remit, if you will, in terms of the responsibilities of the utilities commission. The first of one is to address cellular service in town. And not unlike any of the other boards and commissions that we we have here, there are subcommittees. Uh, the town council has a subcommittee, for instance, on public safety and utilities. The utilities commission, maybe one of the first things they establish is a subcommittee specifically on this particular project or more broadly, the need for cell service and uh it throughout town. Need is important. Uh, we have to know that the consumer need is as strong as what the uh carriers uh believe it to be. And so we'd like to see both sides. And and I think that a a subcommittee, if you want it to be a a committee of the utilities commission, that'd be completely appropriate. But I think the people that have been raising their hands and expressing interest in serving on the utilities commission certainly have the background that's needed to do a lot of this work that uh is being proposed. So thank you for the idea. I think a subcommittee possibly could be used, but I think the utilities commission is well underway and we should get started with that. No applause necessarily, please.
Did you want to say something, Chris? Did you want to say something, Chris?
Thank you, look, you you know why we're all here, we care deeply about this and transparency is the most important thing and you could tell that. Based on some of the sequencing of previous events, we're very focused on this, so thank you for stating what you did. I appreciate the effort, you know, we just want to make sure that this topic is diligence effectively by people who are not biased. And third party can give us factual statements about what's going on, what our options are. And as as relates to the uh, the carriers. You, we put you all in office to, you know, operate this town, carriers don't operate this town. If they say that a big cellphone tower is what they would like to do, that doesn't necessarily mean there could be other options that they could do to achieve the same result. Maybe it's at more cost to them, but that's a problem for them, so. It's, I appreciate uh, the vigilance that's being applied here to uh, investigate this. We all know that cellphone service is not where we'd like it to be, but there are different puts and takes to all that and it's a complex issue with a lot of factors, so thank you.
Chris, could you just repeat your? And I could just say, in addition to Mr. Williams, Chris Williams, uh, we received a lot of input from people who have sent us. When they saw it on the agenda, uh, real concern that and 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 I think. We all ought to think about credibility, um, and if people are concerned that putting together a a subcommittee. Under the auspices of the selectmen, um, it's it's not going to um. Service well in terms of making sure that our credibility is uh, is well regarded and so I think. Committee is an interesting idea if it wants to be part of the um, utilities commission, but under the auspices of the selectmen, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, moving on to Tiger, you wanted to do your tree warden and the additional item you added.
Morning. This first item is um, an item from the tree warden for his most recent bid. Went out to our normal list of contractors, we received two bids back, Homestead Tree Shrubbing Care. Was the low bid at thirty three thousand two hundred and seventy four dollars, it's for sixteen separate locations in town. There are four trees in Waveney that uh, are decaying that need to be replaced or removed and the rest uh, spread out throughout the rest of the town. Also, it's a nice work for us in the past and we'd like to move forward.
Tiger, how much is the remaining balance for um, the tree projects?
Excellent question, I'll have to get that to you, I don't know.
Sorry, sorry, didn't ask you yesterday. Okay, and but pretty much we go straight through till June thirtieth.
Go straight through to June thirtieth, yeah, this past year we did add, uh, we were able to add some monies to the budget, so we'll see if we uh. Can, you know, do a bid in May and June, whereas in the past we were actually having to stall, so we're hoping they'll be able to go all the way through this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I move, we approve the request from the tree warden to enter into a contract with Homestead Tree and Shrub. The amount of thirty three thousand two seventy four is scrubbed by Tiger for removal, pruning and stump removal of various trees in town, second.
Second.
All in favor, I?
Thank you.
Now, the additional item of the Richmond Hill Road Lots of Coordinator.
Thank you, the uh, so we're, we're, we're trying to bring the Richmond Hill Road Sidewalk uh, project. Through its final phases of um. Uh, the grant requirements, you know, local transportation capital improvement program grant, lots of grant. And uh, we have a window of opportunity this uh, June, July and August, when the rail bed will be shut down. To be able to do the work across the rail bed and then finish the sidewalk, we we uh, we don't want to miss that opportunity, so uh. We met with Cardinal Engineering, um, as far as having them work with us as a lots of coordinator. To try to help expedite us through the the last uh, final design phases and the specification work. Um, to then bring this project to fruition. Cardinals done this work in the past for Stanford, some some towns in the upper northwest hills. Uh, the gentleman in question actually worked for the Capital Region Council of Governments doing this type of work, uh, and then was hired by Cardinal as an engineer. Um, so we'd like to go forward with this and um. See if we can't expedite this work and bring it forward uh, forward into fruition uh, this year, so uh, the the. The quote was for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, we added a five hundred dollar contingency. Um, just in case it was one or two additional meetings that he had to attend uh, for a total of twenty thousand dollars. And the monies are currently available.
Questions?
The work that's being done by um, the railroad, is that gonna affect any space in along the railway in New Canaan? Or is it all south of us?
We haven't gotten word as to what they're doing.
We haven't gotten word.
All, no, the um, we just know that the rail bed will be closed, we'll still need flagging, you know, but the rail bed will be closed, it's a good opportunity to come forward. Since, you know, the the only trains that should be coming up and down are work trains at that point.
And there's no concern, there's no expectation that they would be changing anything about the rail on Richmond Hill, the one that crosses.
We met with them on that, they they've looked at the rail bed and the the, how much rail is left on each side. They might be replacing because they looked at that, but it wasn't necessarily due for replacement at the this present time, they felt that they had a couple more years left in it. But I can't speak for what they're, you know, what their final plans are.
I I guess my question is if we've started the project in terms of the sidewalks, is there any concern or risk that we've been not aligned with?
No, we're with, basically what they have to do for us is just that there's a, there's a black pad that sits in between the rail beds. So that you don't go in and out through that, through the ballast, that pad has to be extended, the rail bed will still sit, the rails will still sit within that pad structure. Won't be moving, you know, laterally that that far.
It is a commuter, I'm certainly not looking forward to uh, to the summer closing, although it does present. I think Tiger, an opportunity, and I think kind of Kathleen's alluding to this, I mean. Since it's gonna be, everything's gonna be closed down, does that provide the town with the opportunity to do stuff that needs to be done? Alongside the railroad tracks, whether we use railroad fund, town, you know, general, general fund or whatever, is there, is there anything, does that, does that?
Yeah, we are looking at that opportunity to uh, to capitalize on that fact. Potentially clean the rail bed itself.
I mean, that's one of the complaints that I hear, not just from commuters, but from the general public is like, you know, it's a mess. The tracks, garbage and, you know, all sorts of detritus.
Right, we're looking, we're looking right now to uh, to try to make sure that every one of our staff members is is trained through Metro North's training and safety protocol. And then to see if we can't coordinate that whereby we'd be able to walk our staff ostensibly down the rail bed and clean. You know, any garbage that's there, we routinely do the uh, the the two train stations. But we haven't necessarily been able to attack the rail, you know, the rail line itself, and this is.
So you need, so these guys have, these folks have to be trained. Safety training in order to to actually be located physically present on the tracks.
That's correct, and we we have an annual training that our staff um, takes part in, we're just making sure that each one of them is up to speed. Uh, and is is current in their training and then working with uh, Metro North's flagging services to make sure that we can actually. Uh, do this work with their, with their cooperation, so we've already reached out in that, on on that, we're just waiting for a return.
That's great, that's very proactive.
Thank you.
No further questions here.
Any question? I move, we approve the request to uh. Enter to a counter with Cardinal Engineering for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars plus a five hundred dollar contingency to uh, for the um. Assistance in the design submission and review process associated with the lots of grant funded projects for the Richmond Hill. Road.
Second year.
All in favor, I?
Thank you.
Where's that bring us to?
Contracts.
Any questions or comments about the contracts?
Not here.
I just had one and Kevin, this goes back to a question I had a couple of meetings ago. On the public archaeology laboratory and I'm just looking at the bill. Um, for services done last calendar year, uh, August through October is four thousand. But the total fee eleven thousand eight hundred ninety five, is that something that the town has committed to? Or just this first part, which is the research and fieldwork?
The Preservation Alliance is paying a portion of that, so.
The remainder of the.
I don't recall what the what the split is, but they're paying, this is in defense of our historic district, so.
We're gonna, maybe we should get, just, I know they came initially and asked for this, maybe you can get an update in terms of what they're thinking, maybe for the next meeting.
Well, they're under contract to produce a product, so I don't, I don't recall what the split was um, with the with the uh. Preservation Alliance, but they're paying a portion of the total. Why don't you just ask them?
Okay, we'll do, okay, thank you.
Tax overpayments, refunds. I move, we approve the refunds on our tablets.
Second.
All in favor, I? Selecting comments, I'll, I'll, I attended a very interesting retirement ceremony last party night. Last week at the postal service facility on Camp Avenue. A longtime resident, native of New Canaan, Tony Spadigi, Spadissini, Chini. Um, retired from after sixty five years with the US Postal Service. He serviced the silver mine uh, route for the past forty years, he's eighty eight years old. Um, he had six thousand hours of accrued sick time. Never, never out sick, so I just want to congratulate Tony, um, wish him well on his retirement. I actually suggested he come and talk to us about a job, because anybody who shows up like that, I can use, so.
He could.
No, he didn't want to retire, but he's finally retired, anyway. Any other comments? We're gonna go into executive session.
I just wanted to wish everybody, uh, everybody who who works uh, here in Town Hall, but actually our whole community. Just a uh, a very happy Easter and Passover uh, this week. No further comments.
Okay, we're gonna go into executive session on a technology contract. I, and I think who's gonna stay, Chris, myself, Tucker, Bob, you're doing the. Controls, Andy, if she wants to stay, Tiger, I don't know if you, uh, is there something that Russ, Russ can stay? And we'll come out of executive session and vote on this contract, yes? Yes, we're coming out and voting on the the contract? Yeah, all right, I move him going to executive session at nine thirty three. All in favor, I? Hey, uh, we exited uh, executive session at nine forty eight, it is now nine forty nine and I. Move that we approved the request from IT to enter into a contract with Van Ness Inc. to provide cybersecurity services in the amount of seventy four thousand nine twenty five. Um, as had been described by Chris Kreiser, our IT director. Uh, second.
I'll second you, just for the notion that the the actual expenditures, correct me if I'm wrong, actually coming from the already approved ARPA funds.
All in favor? Uh, my movie adjourned at nine four, nine fifty. All in favor, I? Enjoy.
Thank you. You too.